Apologies, I'd like to make motion to adjourn the executive session. Make a motion to adjourn the executive session. So moved. A motion of a second. Second, second under discussion. Seeing none, but please take your leave.
Yes.
House of Representatives?
Yes.
House of Representatives?
Yes.
House of Lords?
Yes.
House of Lords?
Yes. 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 Yes.
It's in motion to seal the minutes. So moved. Second. A motion of a second, seal the minutes, under discussion. Seeing none, but please take your leave.
Yes.
House of Representatives?
Yes.
House of Representatives?
Yes.
House of Lords?
Yes.
House of Lords?
Yes.
House of Lords?
Yes. 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 Yes.
It's in motion to adjourn special council meeting. So moved. Second. A motion of a second to adjourn special council meeting, all taken. I'd like to call the November, uh, public council meeting to order. Clerk, ma'am clerk, please take your leave. Calling the next council meeting to order.
House of Representatives?
Here.
House of Representatives? House of Representatives?
Here.
House of Lords?
Here.
House of Lords?
Present. Here. Present. Present.
Everyone please join in both wings. Under public knowledge and accommodations, we have none this evening. Public hearings, this is limited to docket matters. Uh, not sure if we have assignment sheets. If we do, I'll take it, I don't think we do. Oh, thank you. Okay, when I ask for it, we name and address the record. Try to limit your comments to four minutes, uh, so everyone will have a chance to speak. First up, Peter Zabinski.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I'm Peter Zabinski, 60 Midland Drive, Cranston, Rhode Island. Thank you for allowing me to come back and speak to you. This is regarding the illegal Cranston police shooting range on Phoenix Avenue.
Mr. Zabinski? That's not on the docket. Uh, still be a portion of the meeting later, where we can come and speak about other docket matters. Um, this portion of the meeting is for docket matters, so laws or resolutions out of before us.
I agree.
Time to see this. We'll see him a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Carl Schubert.
This is, this might also be from, I think this is an update on Pippin Orchard. Um, when you're in there with...
No, this is on the docket.
It's on the docket.
Okay, so there. Thank you.
Can you even call ma'am and address the record, please?
Yes, uh, my name is Carl Schubert, I'm from 1599 Pippin Orchard Road. The reason I'm here is just to do a follow-up regarding the mobile food trucks at 1542 Pippin Orchard Road. The items I'm going to discuss are providing the folks with a PowerPoint presentation. The information and materials that are going to be discussed. Sure. The, uh, materials being discussed, um, are from, uh, public sources and, uh, public record and public domain. Let me know if everybody has a copy of the presentation. So, um, I stated here, um, here to discuss, and this ties into Walt Butto's, um, investigative report that he did on, uh, Thanksgiving Eve. And again, this topic is, uh, with regards to mobile food trucks operating at 1542 Pippin Orchard Road. Uh, the reason why I'm here is to basically discuss the requirement for new ordinances prohibit mobile food truck businesses conducting business in a residential neighborhood in the city of Cranston. Requirement for new ordinances for nuisance and taunting for the, uh, city of Cranston residences. On page two. The agenda, why are we here, what is the issue, what kind of help are we requesting? Um, the impacts of mobile food trucks in a residential neighborhood, the requirement for new ordinances to prohibit mobile food truck businesses conducting business in a residential neighborhood, and the need for improved, uh, coordination between the Rhode Island Department of Health, the state of Rhode Island, and the city of Cranston. On page three, why are we here? Um, the owners of Hayden Brothers' mobile food trucks at 1542 Pippin Orchard, uh, Road appear to be passionate for parking, storing, servicing, um, and operating mobile food trucks in a residential neighborhood. We have some folks that are, we, the residents, um, at 1550 and other residents are passionate against mobile food trucks being parked, stored, serviced, and operating in a residential neighborhood. To communicate, reiterate that there's also a need or immediate need for improved coordination, again, between Rhode Island DOL, state of Rhode Island, city of Cranston, and the general public regarding mobile food truck businesses. The primary focus for us, really, is just on page four, is, uh, requesting assistance from the city council to draft, approve, pass, implement, and enforce new ordinances to protect residential neighborhoods, uh, from mobile food trucks conducting bus, day-to-day business from their home or residence. The secondary focus will be nuisance taunting ordinances. We're requesting assistance, again, to look at drafting, approving, passing, and implementing ordinances for nuisance or taunting, uh, to protect, uh, neighbor or neighbors from being bullied by another neighbor. Page five, what's the issue? Mobile food trucks being parked, stored, serviced, wasted, or operated in a residential neighborhood. As outlined in Walt Butto's investigative story, we've seen deliveries and supplies, um, in the removal of trash. So basically, residents have witnessed deliveries several times a week at 1542 Pippin Orchard Road between 6:30 and 3:00. There are loud noises associated with, uh, the truck drive, uh, trucks during deliveries as well as automated backup alarms, uh, when deliveries are performed. The other piece of this is the maintaining a commercial-grade dumpster. installation of a commercial-grade dumpster at 1542, uh, road to handle all types of plastic and other garbage, uh, as a result of several deliveries being provided by suppliers and vendors. Again, there are loud noises associated with obviously picking up and removing a dumpster. Page six, um, what are the other impacts? We've noticed operating the mobile food truck business after hours in residential neighborhood. The, the residents have witnessed and heard the activities associated with maintaining two-way road mobile food trucks at the owner's residential home at 1542 Pippin Orchard Road. And after the mobile food trucks return from a day's worth of work, um, again, the operations continue. This occurs anywhere between 6:00 AM, uh, and 2:00 AM. And those activities include washing vehicles, unloading trucks, reloading trucks, waste disposal, and employees changing cars. Again, items that have been noted in Walt Butto's investigative report. Also have the issue within the neighborhood of non-stop traffic of employees, again, coming and going. So when you have a food truck, you obviously have employees because these folks decided to move this business to 1542 Pippin Orchard Road. You do have the deal with drivers parking their cars and, um, not only is it associated with that, picking up, um, a truck, food truck, doing a lot of, then coming back at the end of the year. Other concerns we have is again on page eight. Uh, for residents in the surrounding area, will the parking, storing, and servicing on, and operating mobile food trucks at 1542 Pippin Orchard Road have a negative and financial impact to home, home appraisals or the ability to sell homes in the future? Page nine, um, we're requesting a, the primary focus on page nine, again, is a list of proposed ordinances that we're looking at, we run through them all, but basically, at the, at the end of the day, these ordinances will prevent commercial-grade mobile food trucks from operating in a residential neighborhood.
Hey Carl?
Yes?
Yeah, would you go a little longer, because I want you to get to what you needed on page nine?
Sure.
If I could ask you, could you email this?
Yes, I will.
Because I think, um, this definitely needs some follow-up and some work.
Sure.
From our ordinance committee.
Yep.
So I'd ask you for this presentation to Councilman Brady, and I'm sure he and I and the head of the ordinance committee.
Sure.
For next year, because this is the end of the, so.
I understand.
End of the council term, we're starting a new term. Uh, I think this is definitely something we need to address.
Yes.
Because people shouldn't be parking trucks in residential neighborhoods.
Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, so just at, at a high level, so on page nine, uh, I outlined about seven ordinances. Um, the first one, basically, if one isn't forced, really, you don't need the rest, but I'll just sort of walk through if you don't mind, council president, this is the first one, which is, mobile food trucks may use a residential home in a residential neighborhood to park or store the vehicle permanently or temporarily for any length of time. In order to put some teeth or bite into this, we're recommending a fine of a thousand dollars a day for any documented incident. Again, these are food trucks with food, um, hence the reason for the fine, um, and the call will reveal the truck will be towed at the owner's expense and the owner responsible for all towing costs associated with that. Item number two is, under no circumstance can a mobile food truck or its owner use a residential home or residential, uh, property in a residential neighborhood to be a licensed commissary. So the issue for, the reasons for this is, if you allow the food truck to get in there, then you have to worry about the home being converted into a commissary. Again, the business starts back up again. Uh, under no circumstance can a mobile food truck or its owner use a residential home or residential property to support, service, or operate a mobile food truck. Again, necessary to clean and unloading, loading mobile food trucks. Under no circumstance, and number four, there is, uh, under no circumstance can a mobile food truck or its owner use a residential home or residential property to receive, transfer, or store temporarily, uh, or permanently any type of goods, whether they be perishable, non-perishable, to load or unload or support in any manner the mobile food truck or mobile food truck owner. Number five, under no circumstance can a mobile food truck or its owner use a residential home or residential property to receive or transfer any goods, perishable, non-perishable. This has to do with going to Walmart, using your truck, your own personal truck, whether it be a pickup truck, and then bringing that to your home and then loading and unloading such a, uh, mobile food truck. Number six, under no circumstance can a mobile food truck or its owner use a residential home or residential property to wash, clean, but to remove, discard, or empty any materials, including waste, environmental waste, oils, grease, gas, or garbage from a mobile food truck. And again, item number seven basically says if you, if you basically fall into items number two through six, the same penalty applies. Thank you, Carl. Is there any further?
Council president, may I just interject something?
Yeah, I just have, I, I just have, just to add on, you just, you give me just two seconds. So, on item, on item number 12, we're just trying to talk just very quickly and I can get through this. So, on item number 12, this goes into where Walt Butto left off. It says, per Walt's investigative reports, current department of health, state regulations do not allow any food truck products in the plastic cavity to be stored in, at a home unless location is licensed by a state commissary. That's why I have the second item in there, because part of my ordinance. The other issue that I just want to get to. Page 13, again, public domain, if you go onto YouTube and look at the URL, you'll see that the owner, um, of Hayden Brothers at 1542 is quoted in minute 3:50 to minute four, minute, sorry. At minute 3:50 to four minutes, the owner basically is asked where she stores and parks her, her trucks. And she mentions 72 Spruce Street. Now, 72 Spruce Street is the home of the original Hayden Brothers diner. And this is the reason why I'm getting to all of this. Page 14 and 15 basically conclude that the licensees, there are two licenses for these two mobile food trucks, um, and they're basically registered, uh, at 72 Spruce Street. So that's really important here because the, the, all this, the, all this, um, the scenario that's going on in 1542 goes away if the council basically says that they have to operate where the license has been licensed, makes sense, right?
Yeah.
You have a restaurant who is licensed to, to.
Yeah.
Location. So I'm assuming that as a result of that, you don't have a restaurant working out of your home.
So Carl, we're gonna hear this later in the night, I'm assuming you're gonna stick around.
Yes. I, I do, just simply, you know, both know, so I do, um, have some additional information to share.
We can privately have.
I'm sure you do, and I, I'm gonna ask the council vice president, say this question for later in the evening, when this comes up, and we can all discuss it.
Yep.
Then we can, uh, have the, I'm sure the director of administration's gonna have some questions for you too.
Yep.
It's a big issue, I know you squeeze a lot, we're short on time, thank you for doing that for us. Uh, we'll, we'll bring it back up later, Austin, good hang on folks.
Thank you. Jessica Moreno. Good evening, ma'am and address the record, please.
Good nee, good evening, Jessica Moreno, 799 Maydeck Avenue in Cranston, obviously. Um, thank you, council, uh, this evening, um, for having the intentions of putting forward a resolution for moratorium with respect to solar, quote, farms in our community. Um, I can tell you that, um, just this Saturday, I opened the Cranston Herald to see that in our, our community, specifically Maydeck Avenue, there is a proposal for a solar farm that is approximately 30 acres on a 60-acre parcel, and that was much to my surprise. Um, for perhaps very few of you, Councilman Lanny, you were perhaps on the, you were definitely on the council at the time. Um, the last time I came before you, um, we were valued together as a community, um, which we are proud to do, um, was with respect to a pier of the road. Um, this project here is also a great concern to our community. Um, that afternoon, while I had many other things to do, as most people do, I, uh, reached out to some of my neighbors. Although we're sparsely populated, um, uh, we do value together. And upon reaching out to Drake Patton at Cluck, um, she informed me that she's an actual legal abutter, so she was provided with formal notice, while the rest of us, the vast community, because it's sparsely populated, while we will be impacted and greatly affected, have been in the dark. Um, we went and knocked door to door grassroots on Sunday, only for about three and a half hours, and in that time, we obtained approximately 50 signatures in opposition to the current proposal as it stands, or any variation in, in, in that regard. Um, and in this petition, we also obtained approval for the current, uh, resolution for a moratorium on this issue. Um, if you would please, I do have, uh, the original, um, but we could submit to the record, and we also have made, um, copies for each of the council members as well. There were only two people in the doors that we knocked upon that said they needed to ponder it for further thought, and we can respect that. But I tell this to you so that you can fully grasp how deeply our community is opposed to such a project. We didn't even, we just touched the surface, we weren't able to reach everyone. And in that short amount of time, frankly, we were surprised that that many people were opposed to this. This is 30 acres of land, that is, it's densely populated woodland, it is of varying grades. If any of you are familiar with the area, you also know there are flooding issues, although they are lessened over the years with the improvements of the road, but some of the, um, building that has taken place off the road has created additional flooding. If you, look, it's not my area of expertise. This needs further research and investigation, but common sense tells you it's not, it's not going to have, um, just, you know, butterflies or rainbows type of effect to our community. And it's not farming that's rather insulting, it is manufacturing. Other communities in the state, including Portsmouth, have taken this up, um, to the court as well, um, other communities have deemed it as manufacturing, and rightfully so. Um, I thank you for your time, I, I hope this resolution gets approved, and we look forward to addressing this in the future. May I?
Uh, yes, for the copies, I would hold on to the original, you may want to bring that to the, the planning meeting, which is December. But copies we'll definitely take.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Drake Patton.
Thank you. Good evening, Drake Patton, 60th and 4th Maydeck Avenue, also known as Hurricane Hill Farm. Um, I was, uh, on the adventure this weekend, talking to neighbors about a project that would be directly across from my farm. Um, unlike, uh, Jessica, I do not believe that we can stop that project, but I am passionate about stopping others, for at least understanding the impact to our neighborhood. This is not a small-scale farm. I farm, so it's not farming. And importantly, this is a complex matter that affects not just Cranston, but our entire state. And I think we need to take the time to figure out what that means. Specifically, this is an industrial use in a residential neighborhood. We don't allow that in other cases, that starts to feel a little bit like spot zoning. I worry about this particular project affecting my farm in a number of ways. Those are all things that every one of these projects needs to pay attention to. We can't just do this land rush. What is going to happen to the land prices in Cranston? If you can buy an acre of land and turn around and get money for 15 years out of it, what's going to be left for anyone to buy? Whether they want to live here, which I did, and lived here, and I love it here, or if they want a farm, which the people who lease land from me are telling me is becoming impossible in the state. This isn't a secret to any of you, I'm sure. But Cranston still has great farmland, we can still do local food production. The governor's request to have this amount of alternative energy is untenable, it can't be done in Rhode Island, as far as I can tell. Again, we need to study that. What part of our land are we going to give up for that? The governor also wants us to do something about farmland and farming. How are we going to make that work? It's a math question, but it's also a policy question. And I encourage all of you to take a chance with this resolution, to give us time to understand the impact. It may be too late for our neighborhood, but it isn't too late for everyone else, not here and not statewide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Drake. Don't stop.
Good evening, Mr. President. Uh, council members, I'm here in support of the resolution on the solar moratorium. Um, and thank you for taking this up. I hope it's unanimous vote, so the planning commission, the planning department get the message, loud and clear, that it need to be changes in terms of policy, how this is, these, uh, projects are approved, or whether they're approved, the conditions they require. Um, I've spoken about this at length many times. D E M has documented the violations, wetland permit violations of the Lipid Up Project. And those violations continue today due to erosion flowing off the site in the wetlands. They plug one erosion valve in the fence and another one pops up. Happened to me this weekend. I hope I didn't have a chance to read the letter I sent you from the D E M, uh, Executive of Council, sent to the city, National Grid, Southern Sky, about the ongoing, you know, connection debacle taking place on late, um, late and night, late and night road. That never should have happened. If this had been brought into a public process at some point, all those issues could have been discussed a year or two ago, instead of being given secrecy by National Grid. You know what they talk about when they're developers. Like Drake said, maybe too late for their neighborhood, I hope not. There's a gas pipeline going along that project, they may want to blast, raises questions. At least they're talking about the blasting earlier this time, they never discussed blasting at the planning commission for our project. Really found out about it because a blasting company is required by law to tell us, so we can have time. They stuck a wire on my back door, even though the developer had to have known about this necessity long before they went to the planning commission. It's because of the, um, cell descriptions. You can't imagine the pre-engineering didn't know about it. Uh, you may have seen Channel 12, uh, it's, um, news thing last week about this issue, the interview, some vice president from Southern Sky who said, according to the Lipid Up Project, they offered vegetated buffers. She said this on TV. I went to every meeting, every meeting, I went to Dave Russo for a tour of the night farm boundary, showed exactly where we were on vegetated buffers. They never offered vegetated buffers. Nothing of this sort ever happened. At least in public hearings, they may have whispered it in somebody's ear in a bathroom somewhere, but they never came forward in a public hearing and said, you want to do this? Can't they tell Channel 12 they offered it? The question I'm dealing with, what we're dealing with, for the last 15 months now, it's going to be another, probably six months before they're finally done. And so you think that there's no topsoil left on that site? And then Mr. Murray comes up and says, oh, no, no, there's topsoil here. Well, if you read the D E M reports, D E M keeps saying, tell me, they're gonna have to truck in the lawn to plant the grass seed, because there's nothing more to do right now. Which means we're gonna have to go through another parade of 200, 300, 400 dump trailers, hauling another lawn necessary to plant the grass seed on 60,000 acres. So I applaud your effort for doing this, I hope it's in the D E M's vote, and I look forward to the D E M's vote in January, and put a moratorium on these projects, so we can stop thinking, do a proper, we should have done three years ago. Thank you.
Good evening, um, members of the council, council president Serena, for the record, my name is Robert Murray, I'm a attorney at 21 Garden City Drive in Cranston. Uh, I'm here tonight to speak on the resolution. I apologize, I'm not sure what number it is, but everyone is referring to as the, uh, solar moratorium resolution, and that's what I rise to speak on. If I might, just before I, uh, speak on the resolution, take a moment of personal privilege, um, I may not be here in December, and I know two members of the council will be, will be leaving. Uh, I want to personally recognize and publicly thank, uh, Councilman Lanny and Councilman Arquette, uh, they've been on this council for a long time, they've been very receptive to communication with me and my clients over the years, and I want to wish them well and publicly thank them for their service, and I may not have an opportunity to do that in December, so I thank you for the opportunity to do that. Specifically with respect to, uh, tonight's, um, uh, resolution, uh, with me tonight is Mr. Ronald Rossi, his family, uh, they're seated to, to the rear of the audience, um, they live at 1936 Phoenix Avenue in Cranston. His property is designated as lots 108 and 119 on the Cessus Plaid 22. I also represent Southern Sky Renewable Energy Rhode Island, um, uh, which, uh, has proposed with Mr. Rossi, uh, an application for the planning commission, uh, for master plan approval for a 8.1 megawatt solar facility on Mr. Rossi's land. Uh, the proposed facility is intended to be located on approximately 29 acres of a tract of land, it's approximately 64 acres that Mr. Rossi owns personally. The application's been accepted, docketed, and is scheduled next week to be heard by the planning commission. It complies with Cranston zoning ordinances, solar performance standards, and most importantly, the comprehensive plan of the city. People are talking about the plan, but I don't think anybody's really seen it, and we're looking forward to sharing it with the planning commission next week. Uh, we have also initiated a neighborhood meeting, which will be held this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM at the St. Joseph School, West Warwick on Wakefield Street. Uh, we selected that location for the convenience of the people in the Maydeck Avenue area, and we look forward to, uh, sharing the specific plans, um, of this proposed project at that time, and I invite all members of the council, uh, to join us that evening. It's going to be very informal, but, uh, we will have the information available for the, uh, public. I want to note that, uh, since people are talking about it without really knowing what it is, I want to just say that the design of the, uh, proposed, uh, solar farm provides for adequate buffering for neighboring properties, and, uh, we look forward to next, next week's meeting. It should be approved, it's in conformity with all our regulations and ordinances, and I will certainly advocate. for that next week. But tonight, I'm going to just discuss the two parts of the resolution that are before you and you're going to consider later this evening. The first part urges the Planning Commission to enter a moratorium on the approval of all new solar farms as of December 2018. The second part proposes a moratorium ordinance being prepared for consideration in 2019. On that, I'm going to reserve my comments on that possible ordinance when it is introduced and a public hearing is held. But as to the first part of the resolution, I would argue that the Planning Commission does not have the authority to enter a moratorium on applications that have been completed and submitted. Such a moratorium can only be done by the city council to give its legislative legitimacy. The resolution, as it seems tonight, does not achieve that legislative legitimacy. Solar farms are allowed today in Cranston's A-80 zones and all industrial zones. This resolution seeks of ensuring the rural character of Reston, Cranston, which implies that somehow a solar facility can't be compatible with that worthwhile intent. I suggest that it can. The State of Rhode Island has encouraged these renewable energy projects to coexist with farmlands such as Mr. Rossi's farm. Does this resolution mean that only solar farms in Reston, Cranston should be stopped? Respectfully, I'm not sure that's clear in the resolution. What does this resolution mean in terms of solar farms that have already been approved in various stages? For example, my clients have two small projects on Southern Mile Road, each about 1 megawatt. We have master plan approval, and we're in the process of getting all the other approvals necessary to submit for preliminary approval. Respectfully, I would argue that the Planning Commission or the city council can impose a restriction on those projects being completed. The fundamental problem I have specifically with the Natick Avenue project is that there seems to be an attempt to change some rules in the middle of the process. There's a fundamental unfairness to that. My clients' proposed plans submitted the application, paid some $3,000 in application fees. It's been advertised and ready to go for hearing. All in accord with various ordinances, regulations, and regulations that frankly have been approved by most of the council members sitting here tonight. If the council wants to entertain an attempt to justify a moratorium for future projects, that may be certainly within your purview. But to interrupt, to put up a stop sign tonight to the Planning Commission process is wrong. If there are issues or concerns about the Natick Avenue project, the proper form is the Planning Commission, and we will certainly work with the Planning Commission in the consideration of that master plan. If the council wants to examine existing ordinances for refinement, my clients would participate and share their experiences around the state. It's certainly within your prerogative to do that. I'm not saying there can't be revisions to the existing body of ordinances. Because I must question the legal authority to inject the council's possible future legislative intent into the Planning Commission process now, I ask that you consider deleting lines 32 to 34 of your resolution regarding the language to the Planning Commission. This is a topic worthy of discussion, how the city goes forward, but this is a famous issue to Mr. Rossi and to my client. They've played by the rules, and respectfully, I don't think at this point the council should encourage the Planning Commission to somehow stop that process. We're entitled to a fair and full hearing, and we look forward to that next week. Thank you for your time.
Christine and Jamie Kuzma. Christine and Jamie Kuzma. You're the next one for now. Lynn Harrington. And then we'll come back.
I'm so sorry. Good evening. My name is Christine Kuzma, and I live at 279 Alpine Street Drive. I'm not on the docket at all this evening. I'm here for opposition to the win to the by-and-by corner.
Okay, we'll have a second speaking session in about probably 45 minutes. I'll call you back up.
Okay.
This is just on docket and that's all.
No, no, I know. The only reason I'm here tonight is to see how we can perhaps get on the docket for a later date. There's a lot of us residents that wanted time to present something, so just to speak to you about getting in the picture.
I will add it to next month's docket. Madam Clerk, if you could just... Next month's docket.
Sure, because I'm not fully prepared. I was just told about this being just a little while ago, and so just time to prepare. So just give me the name and number of who I can contact and you can set up for a later date. That's fine with me.
Do you want to give one of your cards?
Sure.
She is your counsel.
Thank you.
You are the counsel question.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Lynn Harrington.
Good evening. Lynn Harrington, Tapp Street, Cranston. I am here tonight to speak against ordinance 061807, known as the Compassion Center ordinance, but having been amended at the Planning Commission, the Royal of Smith, I'll address it that way. So the planning staff's opening comments on this offer ordinance were initially addressed toward the expansion of compassion centers in Cranston, but the General Assembly didn't expand the number of allowable compassion centers. However, this ordinance now focuses on what the city really intends to try and regulate, which is the sale of marijuana at retail dispensaries in the city. And the amended ordinance now correctly refers to the land use they wish to allow in the future, which is that of marijuana dispensaries. To date, there are no allowed marijuana dispensaries in Rhode Island that are not part of the state's three-alowed compassion centers. Rather, the marijuana dispensary designation was to allow the retail sales of marijuana, both medical and recreational, without the underlying medical and cultivation component in this case, that they are simply pot shops. And after reading staff's recommendations several times, I have not found one convincing argument why we need to try and regulate something that may not even be allowed to happen. And to this time, trying to second-guess what standard and restrictions the General Assembly might even apply to these dispensaries, whether it be constant police surveillance or other active monitoring, these could cost the city money. And I'm sure we also have the opening of the first legal pot shops in Massachusetts last year. While the hundreds of people in line were upbeat, there is intense media and police coverage of this event. What happens when the media goes away and the city is still left with the problem of policing? There is projected to be a large number of customers to these facilities, and who is going to manage the traffic in flow? And is a 6,000-foot lot, as is proposed as a minimum, going to be big enough for a dispensary? Is there a maximum-size dispensary envisioned, perhaps big box pot shops? Also, it feels like a huge slap in the face to the Chief of Police, Lynn Cross, and his crew, who have done an amazing job of addressing and cleaning up drug operations in the city, particularly in the Edgewood and Washington Park areas, where several of these dispensaries could not be located, even running at Johnson and Wales. This seems counterintuitive. And let's look at the very rare possibility for the siting of one of these dispensaries in a staff-recommended eminent zone, say at the old IHOP at the corner of Elmwood and Wellington Avenue. As you likely know, Elmwood Avenue is slated for a road diet shortly, and will soon have one lane going north and south and a turning lane in the middle. I believe there will be a bike lane, too, so now the traffic from a legally-sited pot shop will be added to the mix, along with the in-and-out of what would likely be a very active pot shop. And the Park Avenue Bridge project is slated to begin next spring, too, which means riding traffic down Elmwood Avenue, past the old IHOP potential pot shop, and onto Wellington Avenue, then back onto Park Avenue for a nasty bar mit, and for who knows how long. I won't even consider the potential for locations off Parniac Avenue at Route 37. Those folks are going in jetpacks to get home. And special permits are not going to help at all. It will only be a function of the quest of legal expertise that gets a license approved. There are so many considerations that are not covered by this ordinance, but at the top of the list is whether or not Cranston residents and taxpayers are on board with this. The Planning Commission voted 6 to nothing, 6 to nothing against this ordinance. There was one abstention. This sends a big message to the council that folks in the neighborhoods are now a little more comfortable with this action. There is no demonstrated benefit to residents, and the results would likely be just the opposite. I urge you to reject this ordinance until further input is gotten from our resident and neighbors. This is too rash a step to take for no documented reason, so don't do it. You have the power, just to know.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else to speak on any docket matters this evening? Come on once. Come on up. Name and address the record, please.
My name is Donna Amatori. I live at 118 Arnold Avenue in the Edgewood section. And I'm just here to speak about the moratorium on the solar developments. And when we talk about the planning and we talk about the future, what I can see is not a demand that we not pursue renewable energy, because I think we all can agree that's a very important thing for the state, for the country, and probably for the planet. But the idea that the planning in this regard has simply been first come, first served because we have a lot of solar developers who have found that costs have gone down with these kinds of installations. So now we're just looking at solar developments everywhere. And when you look at Rhode Island, and it has fewer than 100 full sun days a year, and it has close to a little over 100 of parked sun days, it's not looking like solar is necessarily the best way for it to be the only thing we look at for renewable energy. So when we talk about planning, I think what seems from my perspective to make sense is that we look at all forms of renewable energy and working in tandem, and maybe also areas where we can have solar farms. If you look in Massachusetts, they had a head start on this, and they looked at what was happening to their forests, for example, and they pumped the brakes a little bit, and they said, "You know something? We have a lot of developed land that's sitting unoccupied, big box stores with giant parking lots. Why can't we start putting these solar panels there?" And because they wielded that kind of leverage, they were able to get some kind of collaboration with the solar developers instead of, "Yes, we want to do just in undeveloped forest areas because that is the easiest thing for us." So I think when we look at the fact that we are an ocean state, we're in the ocean, we have wind, we have hydro, there are lots of different things that can be in that mix. So when we talk about planning, I think it's important not to view it through a narrow view of, "Oh, these people are anti-renewable energy," because that's very wrong. What is being asked is the notion that there are different forms of renewable energy, and planning takes into account what makes the most sense for each state in this country. And for Rhode Island, it's probably a more thoughtful mix of different sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak? That portion of the meeting is now closed. Moving on to resolutions, before we can hear the resolution, I actually have to take a motion to suspend the rules to hear the motion tonight. Normally, our process requires things go to committee first, but I felt this because the timing of the matter was so urgent that it should come tonight.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules?
I have motion to suspend the rules to hear this resolution this evening. I have a second under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman McCollum?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman McRae?
Yes. I'm actually going to turn the meeting over to Council Vice President, come down to the floor. All right. The President. Recognize Council President. Thank you, Council Vice President. So this resolution I drafted in response to some things that actually happened during this recent campaign for reelection. Talking with a lot of my neighbors, a lot of people that I've gone to know, looking at how solar farms are being developed, I believe we have seven in flight currently in the city of Cranston at various different points along the pipeline. I was on the council in 2015 when the solar farm zone laws were initially passed. We knew a little bit then, and as time has gone by, I think we know a lot more about solar farms and their impacts on land, vegetative buffers that we might have passed a few years ago that might not be adequate anymore, ways that trucks go in and out of these sites as they're doing their business to construct the solar farms, topsoil requirements that need to be done post the solar farms development. There's a lot of things that we just didn't know, frankly, and we know a lot of them now. So Attorney Murray is 150% right. We cannot stop any project that started. I respect him for coming here tonight and defending his clients and everyone that is associated with these seven farms that are currently in flight, but this council cannot tell the Planning Commission to do anything. We can only request that they hear our concerns and know that the same law that we passed in 2015 probably needs to be updated, vetted, looked at, reviewed, and changed, because the impacts we now know are bigger than just, "Hey, we'll cut down some trees and put up a solar array." I don't want to see over the next six to nine months the construction of more solar farms while we're going back to look at these rules and look at these zoning ideals and change them. So I'm requesting that the planning director write an ordinance that we were here in January as the new council to put in a moratorium on these projects. I know Andrew Schleff put it in 12 months. He and I discussed it. 12 months is what he said in email, but I'm discussing with him now. We may have to cut that a little bit in the ordinance. But this resolution just basically crafts what I think my role as a councilman, not the council president, my role as a councilman for my neighborhood, for my city, of what I want it to look like. And I don't want to continue to approve solar farms and have people go to planning and zoning and say, "I have a right to put in an A-80 zone. I'm putting one in while we're thinking that we may not have the best zoning restrictions, ordinances, and ways to help the residents when these things happen." But I will tell you, Attorney Murray is 100% right. We cannot stop any solar farm that is in flight. It would be a violation of state law, city law, and they would retroactively get approved by the state. So to all the people who tried to come here tonight to stop the one on Natick Ave., I urge you to go planning and make your voices heard again. But this ordinance, the goal of this is so we can actually put in a moratorium on these things, slow them down, take a look at our laws, and make sure they make sense.
Councilman Brady. I will be supporting Council President Freeman's resolution tonight. Obviously, I wasn't on the council at the time that a lot of this was discussed, but it was one of the biggest discussion points walking the neighborhoods in my world, where obviously they're going up. It's impossible to, I mean, you know, listen to the neighbors and understand their points. I've had the opportunity to actually work some farms. So I was on a spent farm, and you see how limited we have of land left to do. And the economic benefits that were coming passing for the city of Cranston, for those farms, just far, in my opinion, do not outweigh the amount of land that we could potentially lose in the meantime. And obviously, our water tables are very high in that for, because there's many, many issues that we've learned as a council since it has been balanced. And I just think it needs to be severely looked at to, obviously, we have funded that project from the names of Mr. Bell, and obviously, that's why I'm supporting Mr. Freeman tonight.
Just one motion. Councilman Hawkins? Oh, yeah. Thank you, President. Before you go, I do need a motion approved. I didn't realize, I didn't like a motion approved. My own ordinance was down there.
Motion approved.
I have motion. See, I can have a second. Under discussion, Councilman Hawkins. Thank you for giving me your answer, Council President.
Thank you, President. Just a point, our legal counsel, the issue brought up about Mr. Murray's statements about those that have already started. You made a good point, Council President, about having a moratorium on future projects. And I'd like to know legally, where do we stand on stopping or not stopping anything that is currently in progress?
Just as a motion, other discussing that I will be supporting this tonight, but again, I do have the legal concern in terms of future projects. I want to make sure that the ones that are already in place are allowed to continue.
Yeah, I can actually, the director of the planning department is here. You can actually speak on it if you like. Go on, Jason. That way the lawyers don't have to get involved and be loyally...
You're first. As far as future projects, you're saying? The goal is to revise, rewrite, learn from our practice over the past few years. And once the moratorium is lifted, the expectation is that there'd be a new set of regulations for new solar farms. Are you asking about projects that are in play right now? They would be under the original regulations that they started with.
That's all I'm thinking. Thank you.
Hi, Brady. Thank you, Director. Councilman Lanning. And then...
Thank you, Council President. Could somebody from the administration describe to me who's in the planning commission and who appoints them?
I believe, and I will defer to the clerk, because she would probably know better, but it's a combination. We have two members of city administration, the public works director, the finance director, are appointed. There are a few appointments from the mayor. There are a few council appointments, I believe. So these two council appointments, two mayor appointments.
It's been changed.
It's been changed.
Yeah, I can...
There are council appointments.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am, clerk.
I can, I can go down and get the report and give the exact names and the makeup. I don't want to give you some names.
Do you want the names of who appoints?
I'm looking for how many members and who appoints.
Oh.
I don't need the names.
Jason, it's nine, it's nine members, and it's a mix of appointments.
Right, there's, if you do it pretty much on point with what you just said. Two members of the administration are voting members. Two members are council president's picks from Eastham and one from Western Crest. And the remaining members are mayor appointments.
Yes.
So there's nine members.
Nine members.
Four are appointed by the, two are appointed by the administration.
To our administrative department.
The public works director.
Two by the council.
Two by the council, and then five mayor appointments.
Five, so the mayor actually has seven appointments on that commission, if you count the administration and his appointments.
That is correct.
And only two from the council.
That's right, that was a amendment we did four years ago.
And there's no appeal process before the planning commission that I know of.
Appeal process for an application?
Appeal process and a decision.
I think to clarify that...
With the words, could you explain it to me?
If any decision of the planning commission would be appealed to the planning board review, which are the members of the zoning board, they wear a different hat when they, when they make those, those decisions.
The planning board review is made up of...
Planning board. Planning board review.
Planning board.
Right, which is the zoning board members, wearing a different hat.
Zoning board members who are not members of the planning commission.
No, they're not, no. Zoning board members are appointments of the city council.
Fully, except for the old ones.
Of the city council.
Okay, so there's an appeal process, but this council is not the appeal process asking for the zoning board.
Zoning board members who are wearing the hat of the planning board review.
Right. I think I also want to qualify, and I'll defer to Jason on this, but I believe that anything that the planning board does is advisory in nature. Is it, is it, on something like that, advisory at a council, though, on an approval?
No, no. Land value projects?
Right.
No, those are not advisory.
So that would not, okay.
But we have regulatory authority to approve projects. So if they appeal, they go to the planning board review. If they're appealed again, they go to Superior Court. That's where those appeals go.
And there are no elected officials on any of these commissions?
No.
No. All right. So what we're having here before us tonight is not a heck of a lot we can do as a council to stop any projects, except make a recommendation and hope the planning board follows through on our recommendation.
That's, that's not entirely right, because the city council approves the comprehensive plan, and they also approve the zoning code. And they also have evidences which I and the planning commission and zoning board are appointed to.
But they are in effect at this moment in time.
Yes.
So if we hear anything that's before us this evening, there's no appeal. You're saying really?
Are we talking, projects that have already...
Projects that have already been accepted as complete
and have been in the pipeline of regulatory approvals cannot be stopped by a moratorium.
In other words, there's no appeal on that?
No, no, not, not, I think, what you're talking about.
Okay. In other words, and Mr. Murray was right when he said you can't change the rules in mid-street.
That's exactly right.
You know, it's a shame, because when I look at some of the projects that have come before us, telling you, cutting away, a good example would be the Cranston Stadium. Kenneth Falowski, who was our groom right over time, said we could use the parking lot by putting stanchions up and making a garage-type thing with solar panels in it in that parking lot.
That's, that's true. That's a true statement. It would be very small enough.
In the city, in the city area, in the common property that the city owns currently, nobody would look at that as a site for solar panels, and that property's unusable.
We haven't looked at that. That site is mostly wetlands, and there's a conservation easement on it from the DEM. So it's not used for industrial use like that.
Well, you can use residential areas west of Cranston for industrial uses. That's okay.
This is, we determined through this process and this commission that the solar farms are compatible to residential. And we amended the comprehensive plan to that fact. We amended the zoning to that fact. So it is the only place where we could do it large scale.
And just to follow up on that, part of the history of that was 880 is developable as residential. If those parcels of land, and to address the question of farm, I absolutely understand and am passionate about preserving farmland. But the challenge we have is if those farmlands are passed down through families or if they go on a market, they can be sold and developed. They are 880, and you can end up with multiple house lots. So I'm not saying one is better than the other necessarily, but I have to tell you from the standpoint of the city, 30 or 40 homes on an 80 or 90-acre lot that was farmland is very problematic on a whole host of fronts. And we can't really stop a developer if it's zoned that way. So it's a very tricky situation, and the preservation of farmland is critical. And the city has, the administration has made efforts to buy development rights of different farms in Western Cranston in an effort to try to preserve. One further thing, Councilman O'Callaghan, it flooded, just so you know. It flooded the past few weeks. It just, that land thing is very real, and it still floods. Just as it aside.
One final question. The solar energy that's being produced is sold internationally in the city of Providence. City of Cranston doesn't get any solar energy?
The, um, Gold Metal Farms, yes, that was a virtual net metering project where the city of Providence partnered with Southern Sky. And they are the purchaser of that, of that power.
We are in the process of drafting bid specs through purchasing to engage with companies to sell. We can't just arbitrarily buy ourselves in one company. And believe me, we've been pitched and absolutely violated all of our purchasing procedures. So we are in the process of drafting something on those lines, Councilman, for those reasons.
I'm glad you finally slightly draft something along those lines, since it's been around for three years, and the city of Cranston hasn't made a bid to get any low-cost solar energy out of this, except for the property taxes on farmland, which is not a heck of a lot of money to start with. I'd like to be a co-sponsor of this resolution also.
You're welcome.
And thank you very much.
Councilman McHoy, and Councilman... Director, just quickly, other than Attorney Murray's client, is there any other projects underway that fall under the current comprehensive plan?
Yes. Well, they all fell under the comprehensive.
That are in the, that are still in the planning stages?
Yes.
Yes. How many?
Well, actually, there's about seven projects that are either in early stages of planning or at the final stages of construction that need to connection. So, you know, there's about seven right now.
So, of this ordinance, those will also be grandfathered under the...
Those, those are, those are in process. So we would not be able to put a moratorium that frees them or stop them or change the rules on them.
I see. So the sooner we get this ordinance in, the better off we are.
Right, right. And I think that, you know, all states can concede. Yes, it's time to revisit the ordinance and rewrite this. It's not, it's not something that, you know, anyone would oppose. It needs to be done.
Right. Council President, if you'd add me to the list of co-sponsors.
Thank you, Council.
Councilman Pepalaskis, then Councilman Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. You know, going back to 2015, I was on the council with a lot of you. And we went back and forth on this a lot. I remember, I don't know if it was Councilman Lanning or somebody else, talked about solar farming, being the new farming of, you know, the sky. Instead of farming from the land, we're farming from the sky. But we might have made a mistake in not making this special use or something where it would come to the council before it would get, a solar farm would get approved if it was going to go residential. So my question to the chair, to the planning director, is this something the council can just draft on the whim because we approved your ordinances? Or do you have to draft it if we wanted to make something special use now? Could we draft it and go through our ordinance committee and send it to you?
Well, if, if, this is like terminology. So you're using special use permit? Is that, is that just a...
I'm just, are there, are there, are there, are there another check or a balance to a solar farm before we're going?
Well, typically, once, once you've approved something through zoning, the comprehensive plan, then it's, it's logged by rights under the zoning. There's a written by right, a special use permit that would go to the zoning board and the planning commission. If that's what we live with, that we have regulatory scheme for that. If what you're describing is something where every project comes to the council for approval?
If it's something where, say, the council decided that any future solar projects that are involved in a residential area would have to come to the council? Or is that something that...
That would be problematic as well, because someone threw out the term spot zoning earlier. That truly is spot zoning. When we, we have the entire 880 zone, that's not spot zoning, because we've identified it in the comprehensive plan and in the zoning. If we say you have to, you know, come to the council for each individual ordinance, that's, that's a spot zone.
Oh, I know, I voted for what we have been dealing with now, a lot of us. And I have no problem going back and revisiting it. So I will be approving, voting for this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Brady.
I think I did send an email out to a lot of members of the council and spoke to Councilmen Stiches and Depp on this matter. I did want some clarification when speaking on with Mr. Lanning. We spoke publicly about, obviously, the city of Providence is using a lot of this energy. And the city of Providence is benefiting from it in $200,000 annually, on off, on off, on. What steps can we take as a council to see that these projects that are approved, the energy is actually staying in the city of Cranston? Like the director just stated a few minutes ago. That was a virtual net metering project in Providence. So they're able to buy the, the energy credits. We were actually in the, in the early stages of coming up with an RFP so that Cranston would be able to enter into the agreements like Providence did, for us to buy those energy credits for, you know, a solar farm, eight or 10 megawatt solar farm. So we're in the, we're in the process for getting that. We've been working with the purchasing agent, the finance department, and the Office of Energy, OE, Office of Energy Resources as well on that issue. So, and then we have to find a partner. We have to find a developer and landlord and enter into that agreement. So the discussions have already begun on that.
Which there seems to be thousands throughout the country, not just this one. It seems to be continuing to develop outward. Is that fair to say? So there would be other companies that would potentially keep the energy. And I assume there's more coming in the future.
I can tell you anecdotally, just the companies that have come into my office, knocking on my door, saying, we want, we want to sell to you, we want to sell to you. And I said, I can't just arbitrarily buy from any one person. So sell to any one person. So this is why it has to go through that process. And we just want to craft that RFP properly so that nobody is getting an unfair advantage over any other company.
Councilman Stiches. Thank you. Just first, in response to what Councilman Brady was just asking about, when that, that came up, the council asked the developer if, who had sold the tax credits to Providence, if that offer had been made to Cranston. And the answer was yes. So the, but the director of administration at the time, Bob Coop, was just not interested in doing it. So the, the city of Cranston had the same opportunity as the city of Providence to, to benefit from that. And up until tonight, we've never heard that the administration had any interest in that at all. But again, to be clear, that was Director of Administration Coop, not Ms. Moxian, who replaced him. Couple of other points. The, um, I was disturbed to hear Doug Doe's comments about the topsoil, since the council passed performance standards on the solar projects that all topsoil had to stay on the property and for minimum disturbance. And that needs to be enforced by the Department of Inspections. And so I hope that the administration will follow up on that and see if the company did indeed follow the law to keep all topsoil on the property and do minimal disturbance. I'm in support of this resolution. I think it's really, it's really very sad what is happening in Western Cranston with seven solar projects. I think we've, seven is enough. I would support a, a ban on all future solar projects in 880 zoning. I think solar belongs on roofs. It belongs above parking lots. As Councilman Lanning pointed out, that's where, and disturbed industrial land, that's really where it belongs. I'd also like to ask the planning department that if this passes and that you go ahead and draft a proposal, that the planning department draft this and not John Bolton, the attorney for one of the solar companies, which has happened, which is what happened the last time when our comprehensive plan was essentially amended by Mr. Bolton, who was lobbying for the solar companies at the time. The last thing I'd say is that, that the city needs to do more than this. The city needs to, to look, as Ms. Moxian mentioned, as looking at buying development rights, at buying available land in Western Cranston. When I asked the planning director at a, at a budget hearing if we had a list of properties that we were looking at, the answer was no. And we should have a list, because what happens is DEM comes out with grant rounds, and unless we're prepared, before they announce that grants are available, we're not going to be able to get our act together to go and talk to the landowners and find a willing buyer. So the city needs to move on open space in Western Cranston while there's still open space in Western Cranston. Thank you.
Councilman Arquilla.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to commend you for the resolution and the failure of it. I'd like to say that Western Cranston is a very special and unique area to the city of Cranston. I think aesthetics matter. I think the people who live there, the residents, like the privacy, like to be in touch with nature. It's a great place to take a ride, which I do very often. But I don't think they want to work up to solar farms. I think it's a kind of a nuisance for them. So I'm voting for this resolution. I'm sorry to say that the projects now, I don't think we can do much about if they've already been passed by the planning board, perhaps. I think when the business wants to build and do structural zoning changes or something of that manner, it may come before... of that, it may come before the council and residents' notices, but once the planning board has passed these projects, it's difficult for us to do anything. I'd like to say that this is only a resolution, which is a request, and many doesn't have any teeth, and many would have more teeth, and I don't know if the consulates are going in that direction, but I will support this resolution.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Councilman Arquette's point, because timing didn't give us the ability to submit an ordinance, have it go to hearing, and then get it done before this, the resolution was written today, it's submitted on Wednesday, to get something to the Planning Director so he understands that he needs to write in a moratorium ordinance for us that we can then implement in January. This is the first step? First step. Councilman Fedeckio.
Thank you, Council President. Director Pizulo, there are some changes that are about to be made up at the state level, as I understand, with regard to--
So, from regulations--
Follow that. Can you tell me, however, these are all A-80 zoned areas, correct?
A-80 manufacturing zones.
Okay. So, the A-80s could become house lots, so that thirty, forty acre apostle could be thirty house lots, as we had discussed a couple of years ago.
Right, right.
And how much asphalt would be put into thirty house lots and roads?
Dozens of acres per subdivision.
Okay. And your predecessor had indicated to us a few years ago that we use about fifteen thousand dollars per house in terms of total costs to the taxpayers. So, a thirty lot subdivision would cost us about four hundred and fifty thousand more per year in taxes.
That's probably low, but yes.
Okay. So, I think we have to be really careful in looking at this, because we're taking it as if we're going to keep it as a farm. I don't think any of these, if we can come up with the money to buy them and all that, it'd be wonderful, or if someone wanted to get into farming. But we haven't seen, in the last three years, we haven't seen anyone approach some of these owners. So, if the owners decide that they want to sell to building developers, to housing developers, we're going to have a lot more burdens on our roads, schools, fire, safety, you know, all of our public services. So, we have to be careful. This is not about the money. I don't think this idea is all about tax dollars to the city. It's about stopping, slowing the progression of development, not burdening the taxpayers further with all of the city services that are required. So, I have no problem with trying to tighten the regulations. I think buffer zones and everything are very necessary, but to suggest that we're going to keep them as family is just not going to happen in every instance. So, you're going to have a lot more houses, a lot more people, a lot more traffic. The people who are on Maydick Avenue would be passionate about not increasing the traffic with regard to the lodges and the development that's there on Maydick Avenue now. So, I would need to be really careful in going forward, and it may take more than a few months. We can ask you, you know, put the brakes on a little bit, but I think the new regulations may have to be based on some of the new state laws that come out, so we're not in contradiction to the state laws. But this is, since it's non-binding, I have no problem with it, but I want to be real careful when we get into changing the ordinances and not doing a real good job in understanding all of the factors that go into it.
And for members of the council, I think that, you know, the time to take in destroying, probably six months, you know, intensively looking at this and doing this, we're following the state process and going to those meetings with the Office of Energy Resources and the City of Homeland Groups. And it comes down to, there's lots of different answers from lots of different communities. There's no one size fits all. So, if anyone's waiting for the state to come up with a prescription that's going to solve all our problems, it's not coming. But basically, the guidance is saying, your communities are different. Little Compton is different than Little Socket, and Little Socket is different than Cranston, and Cranston-- So, they're not going to tell individual communities, this is your lock coverage, this is your buffer, this is your, you know, your maximum megawatts. So, I think that what we have now has worked well, and I think that we have to, we have to definitely look at it from top to bottom and come up with a holistic ordinance. Councilman Sykos came up with the ordinance for performance standards, which has also served us very well, and will address his concerns about topsoil. That's an open question, whether or not that's factual on the topsoil issue, but we'll continue to look at that. So, as far as the moratorium is concerned, it has to be limited, it has to be very tight in terms of what the mandate is while we're doing the moratorium. And at the far end of what we do, we have to have an objective. So, you know, I'm recommending any, probably around six months. I think any longer than that, we haven't been really working too hard on it, so.
Thank you. Thank you. And just to expound on something, Council, Vice President Fedeckio said, it is true that in A-80, they would build house lots, but it would be Bridgewood, not what you have in the eastern side of the city, because A-80 is a lot of land for a house. Typically, we actually make a little bit of money on an A-80 zoned house in the western side of the city. So, even though there are some costs to it, there are costs, but the tax base in seven, eight hundred thousand dollar houses usually kind of almost offsets it. Councilman Brady.
I just want to make one other point. I respectfully understand Councilman Fedeckio's point, but I don't know how much new wood we're going to have to develop if these farmers are getting in for two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand dollars for ten acre lots, and how many farmers can turn that down for twenty-five years? It's a very, in my opinion, very scary thing for a woman. I just wanted to state that.
Any comments? Seeing none, clerk, please take your own resolution.
Yes. 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 Motion passed, General. So, thank you to my colleagues for supporting Ted and I on this. This is something we're pretty passionate about.
Moving on, the Board of Committees, Finance Committee, Council Vice President Fedeckio.
Thank you, Council President. First, we have the resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements. Passed to the committee unanimously.
Ed, same motion approved?
Motion to approve.
A motion of second?
Second.
Motion of second, discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take your own.
Yes. 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 Next, we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements.
Motion to approve. A motion to approve the vehicle tax abatements. Second. Under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take your own.
Yes. 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 Next, we have a resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements.
Passed unanimously, Ed, which passage? Ed, same motion approved? So moved. A motion of second?
Second.
Motion of second, discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take your own.
Tax interest waiver approvals. Yes. 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 Next, we have tax interest waiver approvals.
Do we do them, or are they none?
I think we should all fill them. Order the ordinance ratifying union labors. Do you do it?
A motion approved the labor approvals.
A motion approved the labor approvals. In a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take your own.
Yes. 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 Next, we have the ten dash eighteen dash zero one, ordinance ratifying the Labor's International Union North America Contract Local thirteen twenty-two, fiscal year July one twenty eighteen to June thirty twenty twenty-one. These are the Janus revisions. Motion to approve.
A motion of second. Second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take your own.
Yes. 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 That's all I have for Council President.
Thank you. Moving on, the Ordinance Committee, Councilman Drado, Pepalos.
Thank you, Council President Fina. We have one item on the ordinance agenda, six dash eighteen dash oh seven, ordinance amendment of section seventeen three two four, the code of the city of Cranston, two thousand five, entitled zoning, performance standards generally, compassion centers.
Motion?
Motion approved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for discussion, under discussion. Who wants it? Councilman Sykos?
Yes, I think the key thing for me on this issue is that we were advised by Council, and I'd just like them to repeat it here for the public, that given the fact that the state has decided to have compassion centers, that the city should have some regulation of it, and that this was fairly strict about where they could be, fairly limiting of the number of locations, and that that was the reason could be-- Was that you, Evan, that said that, or was that--
I believe it was Attorney Fedeckio.
Could you just--
The chair, the library on that-- Yes, I had indicated before that even though right now, legislation at the state level has authorized three compassion centers, there has been quite a bit of discussion about expanding that. In fact, in the last session of the legislature, there was talk about adding at least another six to the current legislation. That did not pass last session. I believe that the agenda was in favor, and it did not come to fruition, but I think it is coming. And that doesn't even deal with recreation, no, which probably eventually is coming. Two just came to my mind, Massachusetts, but the point is that it's better to get ahead of the issue and have something in place. And the reason I say that is because if and when someone wants to locate a compassion center in Cranston, the city would be in a very disadvantageous leader position if it says, well, we're not zoned for, it's not allowed, therefore, you cannot operate. That would be conveying a lawsuit that probably would be lost. So, it is much better to be prepared for this, to have the areas where these compassion centers can be located, have them regulated. So, for those reasons, I had indicated then, and I believe it now, that it's, even though the issue isn't before us, it will be at some point, and it just makes sense to have this in place before it gets here. I noticed, and Mr. Pizulo did an excellent job, city rhetoric, for example, doesn't have any type of zoning designation, as most cities and towns in the state, I would imagine, with the exception maybe of Providence, they don't have a designation. And what happens is, you end up with piecemeal litigation. By that, I mean, if someone wants to locate, for instance, Western Cranston, what's going to happen is, if they deny, they're going to go to court, and they're going to argue that it's an agricultural area, or it's a, some type of comparable area, that a compassion center is compatible with that type of area. I'm just playing devil's advocate, and they may prevail. There was one case in Superior Court where someone argued to Judge Gatto that marijuana is a plant, and it's really an agricultural use, and they should be allowed to operate in an agricultural zone. So, these are the types of arguments that you'll get, and you'll have to fight. So, I think it makes a lot of sense to get out ahead of this.
Thank you. Council Vice President Fedeckio.
Thank you, Council President. One of the speakers mentioned dispensaries. Nothing in this ordinance talks about dispensaries. They're not authorized by state law at this point. This only deals with compassion centers, which there, as Attorney Fedeckio mentioned, there are three in existence, and there's a single one that I'm going to attempt to get licensing, I think, in this legislative session. So, if we had no zoning ordinance to regulate, then we wouldn't be in trouble. So, I think it would be a lot smarter to have this in place. There could be a proliferation of compassion centers in the next year. We don't know. It's very likely, actually, from what we, you know, what we see, but anyway, I think that it's, this is a good law ordinance. It's not going to invite people to open dispensaries because they're not allowed, and it does not address dispensaries, they're not legal.
Thank you, Council President. Can you limit the amount of compassion centers in Cranston similar to what we do liquor licenses?
I would actually pose that question to the Chair, to Director Pizulo. I don't know enough about planning. Planting.
That is a good question. I really don't know how many we could limit, because the actual locations are specifically denoted in the legislation that comes out of the General Assembly. So, how many do we limit? It's going to be limited by state law specifically. I don't know if that--
As an aside, we do have a limit on our liquor licenses that is Cranston imposed. We have a cap on liquor licenses that we do not go above or below, whereas a council goes cap, not codified by any state law. So, to the Chair, to the President, could we do something like that?
I think that you probably could, but as a practical matter, I don't think that you would ever be faced with the issue. And the reason I say that is because, as the Director just noted, you have to remember that the licenses for compassion centers are obtained through the state, through the Department of Health, through the Department of Business Regulation. And before I came here tonight, I read every line and every page of the compassion center legislation, which is codified in twenty one twenty eight, six dash twelve, and it lays out for the Department of Health in deciding whether or not to approve an application, many, many factors. And some of the major factors are location, proximity to one another, convenience for people. It would just not make any kind of economic or business or social sense to locate a compassion center on Pontiac Avenue, and then have a compassion center on Reservoir Avenue, and possibly have one on the London Avenue, or so on and so forth. So, the overall question is, I think at some point, you would be able to limit that. If ten people came into the city of Cranston all wanting to open up a compassion center, yes, but I don't think that would ever happen, because of the reason I just stated, they have to agree with the state first, and I don't believe that the state would ever allow something like that to happen.
But as a safeguard, we could, in the case that the state decided to change their laws, we could add it as a safeguard.
I think you could. I think you could, as long as it was something reasonable. I mean, if you said two, you may have a problem, and Cranston's kind of big geographically. I don't know if that would work, but there is probably a number that you could use.
Thank you, Attorney. Councilman Lanny, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, the reason why I brought that up is that, and I understand the regulations as far as where they can be located, I read the educational facilities, parts of areas, but seeing the liquor licenses, the state regulates liquor licenses, what I saw.
Correct.
And we put up a moratorium on exactly how many we should have increased, and to go above that, we need council approval.
Correct.
It gives the council the authority to go above that particular cap that we self-impose. And the reason why the council should have that authority rather than the state, or have a blanket way of doing it, is because if there is a problem, and neighbors are against it, and they come out in force, we shouldn't be in the same situation we are concerning the planning board, making decisions that we have no authority to change. And that's why I'm saying, asking, that we should put a moratorium on their cap, and if we have to go above that cap-- if we have to go above that cap, fine. If we don't have to go above that cap, or there's some reason why not to go above that cap, this council, we got that authority. Does that make sense?
It does. But all I would say, Councilman Lanning, to that is that the analogy between liquor and the compassion centers, it's not quite the same analogy, because with liquor licenses, the state has, there is a legal legislation, the state is specifically limited liquor licenses by town and by city, so there's specific legislation on that. There is no such specific limitation with compassion centers. That's the big difference.
If there isn't, then we can oppose a cap. If there's no legislation in place by the state, we can put legislation in ourselves.
You could, and if it was something reasonable, I think it would be upheld. I just can't stand here tonight and say with 100% certainty that that is, would be ultimately upheld in a court of law. Like I said, if it was something reasonable, I think it would be. But without there being any legislation, and a limitation coming from the legislature...
Well, I've always been, I've always been considered a reasonable person, so I would make a reasonable request as an amount.
Director, do you have...
One quick point is, the way that this amended ordinance faces, is the zoning board review would be granting the special use permit for these if this ordinance was passed. The second thing I just wanted to say is that this is really a companion ordinance to the grower, the growing ordinance we did about two years ago. As far as compassion centers, they allow both the industrial growing and the dispensing. This ordinance that's before you, as amended, is specifically for just the medical marijuana dispensary, and not calling it compassion center because that allows both. So we will even more limiting then the definition of compassion center. And that was the amendment that we gave to the council. So I just got to clarify, this is only for the medical marijuana dispensary, not recreation or anything else like that.
Any other questions? Councilman Paplowski.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Trudy Director, I'm pointing to the chair. Page four of the ordinance, you have a buffer comparison table. Can you give me a rundown on this? There's three columns here. If this ordinance was to pass tonight, which column are going to affect?
Hold on one second, please. It would be the third column. The third, the third column was as stated by the council. The middle column was with the restrictions that were recommended by the planning commission, which basically brought it down practically to almost nowhere. The third column's what we came up with after we studied the GIS and buffers. So it would be that third column says 99. All right, so looking at this, the third column, so the planning commission recommended 1,500 feet from a daycare, and the planning staff knocked it down to 500 feet. So 1,500 basically makes it untenable for many of our industrial zones. For instance, off of Plainfield Pike, there's Pumpkin Patch, Daisler Center. That's slap dab in the middle of a major industrial area where these uses could be well suited. A buffer like that basically takes out a huge chunk of that industrial zone up there.
So basically, this would cut it down so a dispensary could go within 500 feet of Pumpkin Patch?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go down to the, the next one down is library. The commission recommended 1,500 feet, and the planning staff recommended 500 feet, so now we can put a dispensary within 500 feet of a library?
Yes.
Okay, so then the same thing, it goes right down the list. So 500 feet from a park or a playground, 500 feet from an outdoor sports field, 500 feet from a substance abuse treatment facility, that's 400 feet from a residential zone. So you could potentially put a dispensary on Cranston Street right outside of a neighborhood.
If there's a industrial zone over there.
There's not sure.
There is.
The problem we found when we were doing the buffers, we actually did all the buffers, we worked with GIS department and Joshua Bell, we ran the analysis. When you talk about buffers of 1,500 feet from these uses that are dispersed throughout the city, you essentially have no place, no reasonable place to settle these. My whole thing on that is, oh, that's not the fault of the residents that bought the houses that are now going to be within 400 feet of a dispensary. So I have, I have an issue voting for this tonight. I'm really meaning I'm not voting to approve this, just because of the boundary lines. I voted against in committee. Now, if you go to page 12, I read the letter that was submitted by the department that had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven points all against this ordinance, for reasons of buffering, for being close to recreational facilities, being no rush to pass this ordinance at this time. So I don't have a lot of second thoughts on this one. I haven't heard anything tonight, really, to push and to switch, change my mind, so probably going to be voting against this.
And I will just remind the councilman that right here and now, we can amend this if we so chose.
Okay.
If we could, and we could, if we wanted to do that exercise, we could do that tonight if we wanted to, because we can run some of the numbers and look at the analyses. If we chose, I don't have enough time for that.
I would, just with the council, you know, I've been, I read a lot of this, you know, this came up in an ordinance meeting, it was an ordinance meeting, we were here for like two hours. So this is kind of something we pushed to this council meeting, no one could discuss and talk about it. Hearing from Council, before Council President Lanning talking about the council having a role in this to make sure that we are the approving authority, hearing from the concerns of Ward Five Councilman Chris Paplowski, whose ward is generally, you know, covered in some M1 zones, but also across neighborhoods, thinking about some of the areas of Ward One, which has similar challenges, feels like the restrictions might be small. To sit here today and try to actually make all these changes might be difficult. So my recommendation would be to send this back to committee for another month, have a good, solid hearing on it, really vet it, because I think there's significant changes that we have to make to this, and it's a, you know, it's a four-page ordinance, and I know Director of Planning, I know it was voted down six-nothing by the membership of the planning board. If that's not sending us a message that they don't like the way it's written, I don't know what else it's. So as Council President, my recommendation, the body, is send this back to committee so we can really talk about some of these things, and try to change some of them, vet them, and really make sure we have something that, I know we need, I know we need something, because we don't want someone to come to the city and file an application and then say, "Well, I get to put this around the corner from Chris's house because it's zone A80 and it's farm land." I get it. But I think we just have to take some of the concerns of the planning board into effect when you look at this.
And Council President, I think as long as that's understood, that we have to be proactive, and the goal of this isn't to encourage these places to come, it's to protect where, and you know, discussions of, this is going through the police department, the police chief has had input, and so I understand if you want to go back and vet it further, but I think the, that six-nothing, the zero-six recommendation of planning, I'm not sure, and I know at the ordinance meeting, the solicitor addressed the legal questions, and I'm not sure if the planning commission was fully aware of some of the legal ramifications on that. So as long as everybody's aware of the fact that this is really preventative, as opposed to positive and an endorsement, I think that's what has to stay in the back of everybody's heads on this.
I agree, but some of the concerns that my colleague, Councilman Paplowski, is bringing up are...
Thank you, Council President. I recommend we make a motion to continue this and bring this back to ordinance committee.
Motion to send it back to ordinance committee?
Send a motion to the back to ordinance committee.
Motion to send it back to ordinance in several seconds. Check before we get a lot of talk, so stay with Councilman Paplowski, then go to Councilman Hopkins, then go to Councilman Burke.
Thank you, Council President Frina, for your comments, and just have the concerns about the boundaries. So my only request is if we send this back to ordinance committee, you bring the PowerPoint, you have all of your boundary tables and maps with us, so we can look at it. I'd like to see the maps on PowerPoint for the original ordinance, the planning commission comments, and the planning staff recommendations. And then my question to you is if we make other changes in the footage, can you do that on the fly while we're here, or is that too hard to do?
I don't think we can make those on the fly, but if you wanted to make some recommendations right now, we can work those out with GIS prior to that meeting. So you, 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 what is it, residential, the residential part?
Yeah, I was just comparing the tables here, where we went from commercial daycare, and library, and playground, and sports facilities, and place of worship, I see an X here, so I'd like to see what the boundary lines would be on that, if we could match that with something with possible residential, just so we can kind of see what we're looking at and making a firm decision before we vote.
Okay, and I just want to be clear, because we've spent a lot of time doing these maps, and what we set, they became very messy when you started looking. They overlap, so there's a thousand for buffers, there's a 500, there's another 500, there's another thousand. It gets very hard to see. So when we, when we ran these maps, at the end of it, there's only a few pockets where you could actually do any of this, and I think these are in the, in the recommendation. So if we, if we wanted to increase a couple of them, we might get back down to the numbers where there's practically like five or zero lots where we can actually do...
I don't think that's the intention, but I didn't need to look at these numbers and make an informed decision.
Okay, so if you want to give some quick guidance, or the, because it takes the time to run these maps, we don't want to come back to ordinance and not have anything for you to consider.
So I would probably have your map for your planning commission comments, then your planning staff recommendations, and find a middle ground on those numbers as well.
We know those tonight, right now, if we just have to turn the computer on, we have those.
Do we have the time? Are you on it?
We have this, it's just a matter of...
We can't change these on the fly because they're stacked.
I think having an ordinance committee hearing is the way to go. To your point, Council, Councilman Jody Paplowski, if 500 was the original ordinance, and if 1,500 is what the planning commission recommended, what does a thousand look like? Maybe having those three maps, we can put them up and compare the three, basically, as you said, split the difference between what the initial ordinance called for, what the planning commission recommended, so we can see them. I do like the idea of coming here with clean heads, having, even having a special meeting, the only thing we talk about is this.
Fine, that's your...
And I also want to point out, though, that our recommendation to the planning commission was actually much more restrictive than what was actually given to us to consider. There was no buffers for residential, that was in the original ordinance. There was no buffer for churches, there was no buffer for halfway houses, athletic fields, that was in the ordinance, so we added those in. I think the planning commission went a little far with some of the buffers where there was just basically no land left, which the whole, the whole city was buffered out. So, you know, we took the original ordinance, and we stayed with a lot of it, and then we added to it. So I just want to make sure that if we come back, we actually have something that's useful to talk about with the commission. Is there, is there an ordinance list that you want us to increase so that we can, we can work those out?
Can I review it and send it to the attorney?
Of course, Council. Okay. Councilor Gatto, and then Councilman...
Thank you, Council. And Council, where's your finger?
This body has the privilege to amend this right on the floor at this time. If we send it back to committee, the ordinance committee can make changes, pass it on to the council, and the entire council can make another amendment about it. So this is a rough draft until the final bill is passed, and we'd have the privilege of making any amendment up if we finally disagree.
Thank you, it's at six, because it's the past one, it's made six votes on this one. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, President. I tend to agree with Councilman Paplowski in his version of this, and sending it back to ordinance, I think is a good idea. I do have one question for Director Pizulo. On the left column on page four, it says, "Other locations where groups of minors regularly congregate," and there's an X next to that. Can you tell me where, what's kind of a general...
That was, that was not in the original ordinance. That was a suggestion of the planning commission numbers, so we added that into the table. We really didn't know what that meant, there was no definition for...
I don't know what it means either.
So we actually just left it out, it didn't make it into the final column.
How do we constitute a group of minors that regularly hang out somewhere?
You see, but we had to try to figure out as well. Somebody just took it out. It was, it was untenable from, from an ordinance standpoint.
Okay, so that is, that is...
That, we just, we did not add that into our recommendation to the, to the final planning commission unless this...
Thank you. Councilman Brady, and then Councilman Vavickio.
I was just going to say I share a lot of the same points that Chris brought up, so yeah, I like the recommendation.
Councilman Vice President Vavickio.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I don't mean to, you know, make on your parade, but just be mindful of one thing, and I think you may, Mr. Pizulo, you may want to discuss it with one of the solicitors. As you may or may not know, the 300-foot, well, the expansion of the 300-foot distance where sex offenders can live in residential neighborhoods, which the legislature made it 1,000 feet, in that case, the ACLU got an injunction against the state, and so I believe the 300-foot distance is now, is still law until that case is resolved. So you have to be careful when making it so restrictive that we're going to have a problem. I understand the intent, I'm all for it, but Ryland is very small, so when you talk about 500 feet or 1,500 feet, you basically may exclude just about the whole city, and I think you have to be aware of that so that we don't get into a battle where, you know, we pass an ordinance that says you have to be 1,500 feet from everything, and there's four apostles in the whole state, in the whole city that would be, you know, that could be used, then we may end up with a lawsuit in that, in that regard. So just, I think we need to be really careful with that. I understand where, you know, obviously playgrounds, schools, churches, we'd like to do that, but we have frankly the same problem with the sex offenders, and right now, we're under only a 300-foot distance.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other comments? I have motion to send it back to committee. Second, there'll be no comments. Court, please take the roll.
House of Representatives?
Yes, sir.
House of Representatives?
Yes.
House of Representatives?
Yes.
House of Representatives?
Yes.
House of Representatives?
Yes. 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 Under, that conducts, concludes the major business of the evening, under public hearings. This is Frady, a member of the public, he got to speak in a undocked light. Actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually ask you to wait a moment, because he was here earlier in the meeting to speak, and he got up, so... Cut him off earlier, so we'll give him his four minutes now. Name it out to the right, Mr. Chulak.
I can't hear.
I can't hear you, sir. Turn the mic on. Is the mic on? The green light, just push.
How's that? Sorry, I'm connected. I may speak against the illegal operation of Cranston Police Shooting Range. As you know, I was here last month. I was sharing a lot of things with you, some of the facts. I may just preface that by, some of the remarks of the prior proposals before this evening impacts the residents that has exposure to this gun range, severe, severe problems. The pollution from the lead residue is very problematic, and is a health hazard to the nearby residents, myself included, and most especially to the young students attending in middle and high schools located directly across the street from the range. I submitted pictures which shows the water runoff from the police shooting range. This water is polluted with lead and is poured into the street. This runoff goes directly into the bay. It must not be allowed to continue. I also outlined in permission I gave that the pictures, some excerpts from the federal EPA website, which states many things regarding lead in the air, lead in the water. It incorporates national emission standards and lead waste, best management practices for lead at outdoor shooting ranges. It also goes on with the permitting phases of having an outdoor shooting range. It has a planner which communicates with councils. And they communicate the social impacts, economic benefits, whether the future noise control... control works up possible, the frequency and predictability of disturbances, and environmental impacts on air and water, and the nature of the air in terms of likely amenity expectations. Now, after the consultation with a planner, the council must decide whether a planning permit should be issued or not. If the council considers that the amenity loss to the community is too significant, it may never decide to refuse the application. Of course, the City of Cranston City Council has not considered granting a permit to the police department because the police department has never applied for an operating permit. This is in clear violation of federal EPA regulations. I urge you to please rule that there should be a closing of this facility or have an indoor range built, and this to be funded with the money that we receive from the renting of this facility to other towns and cities and police academies. This goes on on a daily, weekly basis all year long. There's a great deal of money, which I couldn't find in the city budget. I don't know where it is, in some flush fund, where the money goes. It's a considerable amount of money. So I urge you to do this and build indoor facility in the meantime.
I do have a...
And I will be submitting in the near future approximately a petition with approximately a thousand signatures in opposition to this range. Thank you.
Director.
Thank you, sir. Not to engage in back and forth, because I know it's undocumented, and I get a little nervous about discussing too much, it's undocumented, but just for the council's information, this week, the police department had, I believe, about $25,000 of more soundproofing installed. We also are working on moving certain piles of dirt, creating berms and sound buffers as well. So I know it doesn't address all of the issues brought up tonight, but just as an aside, I did want to mention that. I know that there's potential legal issues and everything else going on with this, but just as an aside, we have put that in. And the other thing is, there's not a lot of large firing going on anymore. It's predominantly handguns and pistols, which is a significantly lower sound.
Thank you, Director.
I couldn't hear.
She said that they've done more buffering for sound, putting in berms, and they're holding back on large caliber emissions, firing pistols.
I can hear you recording. It sounds like...
Yes, we don't want to get in back and forth. This is undocumented. I just wanted to tell you what she had said.
And I have reached a charter, the noise prevention of outdoor shooting ranges around the country, they don't work, and that's why one of the companies that they engaged wouldn't give them a warranty that it would work. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, ma'am, sir. Anyone else to speak on undocumented matters? Good evening. Name and address of the record.
Pony D' Rosa, 97 Cypress Drive. Good evening, President Froni, your council members. Two of the council members have already probably heard portions of the following statement, and I do apologize for repeating. On October 7th, at the planning commission meeting, Mr. Kelly Coats of the Coppi Naro Group presented grandiose plans for proposed road improvements for Ponyac Avenue, Sacan Masset, New London Avenue, and Route 37. Let us be clear, recent infrastructure improvements will be funded by a tiger grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation and not the Coppi Naro Group. The proposed plans are designed to channel drivers into Chapelview, but will only increase traffic congestion in and around the Garden City neighborhood and surrounding communities, particularly with the advent of Phase Two in Chapelview. In addition, Froni has addressed the issue of frequent gridlock on Ponyac Avenue between Route 37 and Sacan Masset. The addition of proposed new lanes in that section of Ponyac Avenue will solve nothing, given that drivers are permitted to exit left from Blue Awakenings in Shell Station. The other continuing traffic radio takes place at the top of Hillside Road, where the entrances exits from Garden City Center. This road intersects with Sacan Masset. Drivers crossing over Sacan Masset from north and drivers approaching from the southwest continue to be confused as to how to proceed. With the possibility of, possibility of a Topgolf venue, along with talk of a possible Costco, and potential for further development of the Pastore Center, on behalf of the Rang Department of Corrections, we are confident our traffic roads will only increase. Following are other issues that need serious attention prior to any potential development of a Topgolf in Chapelview. The current main entrance located on the west side of the former Citizens Bank building will be moved to align with the entrance for lanes and roads in Sacan Masset. There is a proposed traffic signal to be installed at the new entrance. An additional traffic signal in Sacan Masset will only add to our current traffic problems. Five traffic signals on a mile-long stretch of road makes absolute nuisance. The rear portion of a potential Topgolf building will be three tiers high. The entire structure will be located in the sun-glowed portion of the project site. The facade of the main building will be covered in neon lighting, a bizarre type of architecture that will not complement the attractive development already in place. Twenty-eight poles will cover the perimeter of the driving range. Each pole will be 170 feet in height. To give you a perspective, they will be slightly more than double the height of the piling scenes for both Blue Awakenings and the Shell Station in Ponyac Avenue. These poles will be permitted to prevent golf balls from landing in passing vehicles traveling on Route 37, as well as the abandoned buildings in the project site. There is the likelihood of stadium lighting anywhere from the three-tier building where the driving bays would be located. This type of lighting is common for a baseball field. There would also be neon lighting coming from receptacles on the ground in the driving range area. Another concern is the potential for birds in flight to be coming tailing in the net. The mesh is one inch in diameter, a size larger for small birds to be trapped in the net. In addition, migrating birds are ruled by artificial light pollution, which might present an ecological trap. We wish the City of Cranston to consider steering this potential entertainment center to another location, as we feel this type of development is not considered smart growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pauline. Always good to see you.
Gretchen Vingo, 27 Perennial Drive. Good evening. I didn't see you on speaking tonight, but Councilman President, I wanted to follow up on what you had to say earlier regarding the solar farms. I thought you spoke very well about how we learn as we go, and about how development at one time may have made sense, but now requires a second look. As we move forward into 2019, I hope that the thought process is applied to all development in Cranston. We have a major development proposal at 100 Sacan Masset crossroads that is not appropriate for that area and will require additional zoning changes in order to be built. This parcel had a zone change back in 2016, and the development was presented as a mixed use of residential, retail, and office space. We were told it would mimic Chapelview. Two short years later, we're now talking about a big box entertainment venue, specifically Topgolf, which has been named by the developer. The city defines big box related to retail as any facility more than 30,000 square feet. At almost 70,000 square feet, this most certainly will be a big box venue. I'm asking for your support for all residents in keeping Cranston from becoming an overly developed and overly commercial city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Anyone else? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. District of City officials, there are none. Report of city offices, there are none. Executive communications, for the last time?
For the last time? Let me first say, request you be continued for service, Captain Ryan, Cranston Fire Department. Captain Ryan has met all qualifications, and we thank him for his desire to continue to serve.
I would say motion to approve the request. We will have second. Sergeant, on discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Councilman Hoppins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stakers?
Yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Councilman Paplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Froni?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes. Yes. You all have the report on hiring special council consultants. Before you sit down, Director Muske, I want to thank you for years of service to the City of Cranston. It would be sad to see you go. I consider you a friend. You've always done what's best for the City of Cranston, so thank you for your years of service. Those of you who don't know, Director Muske, we're moving on. If she wants to tell us anything about her role and say anything nice to the city, now read her time.
Well, sure. Thank you. Thanks for that, Council President. Yeah, I am starting tomorrow, I'm being sworn in tomorrow as the town manager of Stoughton, Massachusetts, so it's a great opportunity for me, but I don't know if there's any privilege greater than having served my hometown on and off for 15 years. This is my third round here. It has been my pleasure and my distinct honor to work with a number of councils. This particular council, Council President, we have worked together closely, as I have with many of you on the council, our solicitors, and our staff, and everybody's amazing. I see Mick Lee out there, who went through his first election cycle, and I think did a phenomenal job on keeping everything in the spirit of what it is. I'm appreciative for the work that we have done across party lines. We've been able to bridge a lot of gaps, and I think that that's wonderful, and we've all collectively, I believe, worked in what we believe is in the best interest of the people of Cranston. And not everybody always agrees on what that is, but I think in our hearts, we have done what we believe is best. And again, it's been my distinct honor to look out of my office and see my alma mater. You know, I've got a bleeding green person over there with me, and I don't know if there's any greater pleasure than to be able to do that for the community that raised you. So I move on and start as a town similar to Cranston, with people, a lot of people that were born and raised there and have a passion for their community, and I'm excited and for the challenge of being able to work with them and tell them that I can bring that passion and understand that passion. But again, I thank you all, and I thank members of the public, many of you I've worked with for a long time and known for a long time, and you've just been very supportive and fair in a lot of the discussions that we've had, and they haven't always been easy, but we've all stood together and I think moved a city forward collectively. So thank you all. And, oh, as an aside, thank you. As an aside, Director Perillo, our personnel director, will be stepping into my role, beginning tomorrow, and I welcome him, and I think, as you all know, Dan's been a great asset in the personnel department when he came in as personnel director, and he's been working side by side with me for every year together and is familiar with how this all works. And so I feel great that the city and the administrative side has just been left with a tremendous director. So thank you all.
Thank you, Director. Council President Communications, you know, tonight was a lot about learning as we go. I think Gretchen said it right. I think we've done a lot of things over the last few years as a council to drive development and drive business and be pro-business and think about doing things in a great way. I think now is the time, as we're looking at these new developments, we're looking at adding more solar farms, we're looking at big box developments. It's time for us to take a step back as a council and just make sure that we're approving the right things. I know for a long time Mayor Fong was doing a great job bringing jobs back to Cranston, bringing development back to Cranston. There were big developments, and I think he's continued that and is going to continue to do that. But I think we as a council have to weigh the needs of the residents and make sure, not that we didn't do that before, but what went and worked five, six, 10 years ago might not work anymore. And I think that's going to be the hallmark of my next two years in this council, to make sure that just because something's always been done away, doesn't mean it's the right way. We're going to question a little more, we're going to act a little more to make sure that everybody's needs are met all the time. Now, I know we all do that, but sometimes we think about something that might get developed and might have happened. Solar farm's a great example, but we started doing this three years ago. Like I said in my initial statement, it was, hey, get rid of some trees, put in a couple of solar arrays. Talking about dispensaries, you know, try to put some footage in, make sure it's right, and put them in. I think we have to make sure we're doing the right things for everyone, including developers and residents. So I think that's going to be the hallmark of the next two years. Thank the Pope for electing me. I know everybody in here is coming back, except for Councilman Naketa and Councilman Lanning, so thank you, gentlemen, for your years of service. Councilman Naketa, I'll do it officially again next month, but I look forward to working with you gentlemen again, I think, and the two new council people, I believe he was here earlier, Councilman Ronald Lake Donigan, and then Councilwoman Vargas. So it'll be good to get some different perspectives in here. It's always nice to have different people coming and going, and that's the hallmark of being elected. If it was the same nine people year in, year out, I don't think things would change. I think it would be good to get some different perspectives in here, get some new blood, new ideas. I know when Councilman Brady first came in, he challenged a lot of the conventions and the way we're doing things, just because it comes from a little different school. So it's nice to have that kind of ability. So I'm happy to be here another two years, I'm happy to be with you guys another two years. I think it will be exciting. With that, Council President Communications, back to business, Councilman Stekos.
Yes, still trying to get a read on the yardworks code violation status, fine, the amount of fines that have been assessed so far, and where this stands.
So there are two violations in the court right now. One is for the temporary storage containers, and one is for the floating debris. The fines will come as that goes through the court process. The police were also sent over and did several tests. I have a report which I can give to the clerk to give to you, and neither of the tests showed a sound violation, so they were within the decibel range. But both of those are in court now, awaiting, and then fines will be assessed for the court.
What fines will the city request?
I don't know what the prosecutor's going to request. We've pushed them to the fullest extent, so I have no reason to believe we're not going to ask for full extent. I mean, we want those temporary storage containers out of there, and, you know, we just present the case as best as we can, and then it's in the judge's hands at that point. But the prosecutor's fully aware that, you know, we're not taking lightly what's happening.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a chance to talk to the chief of the Division of Agriculture?
I have not. I have not.
Will Mr. Perillo be talking to them?
Yeah, I'm sure he will.
For the record, he's nodding his head, yes.
We got to nod, haven't we?
You got to say it. Thank you, Director.
Okay, and then what is the status of Perkins Avenue closing off the street?
So we are still actively working with that one house lot and looking for ways to buy it. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do it through FEMA money, so we may have to use some open space money. FEMA will only allow us to purchase it up to a certain price, and we can't say, well, for the extra 20 or 30,000, we'll just throw city money or open space money on top of it. As ridiculous as that sounds, FEMA doesn't allow that. So we're going to have to buy it outright, and we are looking to do that. In the meantime, I spoke to Director Mason. He believes that we can at least close off beyond that house and block it, and shut the electricity as best as we can beyond that, but ultimately it goes to put all the electric and utilities out of there.
So that will be happening, the temporary closing off past that house?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brady, you are, sir.
I'm just looking for a ministry report on paving business being operated and that's in the court system.
Yes.
Happening in game mode. Do we have an update on that?
For working without a permit, I do believe we're being told by them that they are actively looking to relocate and understand that they have to. So it's being watched, but it is in the court system, yes.
Second update, obviously, we had someone speak about it earlier tonight. Is there an update on 1542? Has an update on 1542 Pippin Orchard Road.
Yes, they have received a notice of violation for operating a business out of a home. And it was interesting, a lot of the information that you all presented, and I think continue to present what you have, the building official is actively on this and is right with you on this, believe me, you are being supported on this. The challenges, because of, you know, we have weight restrictions on trucks, those individual trucks don't trip a weight restriction thing, and you have to be careful of that because you can't preclude somebody from having, let's say, a pickup truck or a heavy truck that blocks it. The question on the differences with food trucks is an important question because of the health issue, and I think that's where the discussion has to broaden out. The operating of a business is clear-cut, and our zoning ordinance is, one of the things in our zoning ordinance is it's an affirmative ordinance. If something isn't mentioned, that means it's not allowed. So our zoning ordinance is very, you can do these things. Food trucks are not in that list. So by virtue of that, it's a very affirmative type of a zoning ordinance. They're not mentioned, they're not allowed, and I understand the request to do an ordinance that precludes food trucks specifically in residential, but basically they're operating, and we just looked at this about operating businesses out of dwellings or operating a business in a residential area, it's a violation.
Yeah, and they're also operating the business after hours. I think the other thing is, is just coordination between, again, the Rhode Island Department of Health and the City of Cranston, just naming that as the record again. Naming that as the record again. I'm sorry, Carl Schubert, 1599 Pippin Orchard Road. Sure. Carl Schubert, 1599 Pippin Orchard Road. Yeah, so the issue is just the after-hours that goes along with it. I think the other piece is that it's not commercially zoned, so I don't even know how that works. The other piece is, like I said, I think if there's coordination, I think, between the Department of Rhode Island, Department of Health, and the City of Cranston, I think they just have to have it set up. So maybe we don't need an ordinance, but maybe we need the Rhode Island Department of Health to make it mandatory that if you're signing up to be a food truck vendor, again, I like them, I enjoy them, but they just have to have written that they're going to provide proper storage in a commercially zoned area.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Carl. But before, I don't want to get into a back and forth here, sure, but Director Perillo, can you stand up? What is it called?
He's the man.
That's the new guy. Okay.
Just so you're aware.
Just so you know.
And I think you hit it on the head. When you said the comment about it's not a commercial zone, that's the whole point. So the zoning ordinance is very clear. There are certain businesses that are allowed in residences, and they're very clearly listed. Food trucks are not one of them.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my fear is, my concern is that the level that you're hoping to use in ours is the level for the weight of the truck.
No, 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 we're not. We're not, because we can't get it on that.
Okay.
Because the trucks are actually in compliance. She's being cited for operating a business in a residential zone, and that's exactly what I think you're after.
Yeah, and the other piece is, like I said, if you look at, and I'll be more than glad to share this with the Council President, if you go online and look up the licenses, it says 72 Sprecher Street, so.
Yeah.
How you get licensed in one place a lot.
Right, but operating the business out of a different location.
Yeah, insisting.
And so that's, I think the other, you know, the other thing in all of this that you bring up is an important point. Food trucks are unique from a health and safety standard. You have foodstuffs, where is it being cleaned? And this really is, I think this is really a Department of Health question, so we do need to work with the state on this and find out what they're doing with food trucks.
They're the, obviously, the owner's lawyer has been quoted, and you can read the transcript on WPI, but it's footage, as stating that larger deliveries will be sent to their commissary, which we know is 72 Sprecher Street, but they're allowed to take smaller deliveries. They don't define what a delivery is. And the other thing is, is that the Rhode Island, Cranston, I think Cranston has a ordinance as well, Rhode Island Department of Health have clear ordinances that basically state you have to get everything at a commissary. So I don't know what, I don't know if that's a statement, but, and the other thing I just want to bring up, just want to make it crystal clear, just one more thing, is that Rhode Island Department of Health stated that they're allowed to take smaller deliveries. Just say, thanks to those deliveries of quote-unquote "food" as an example. So the issue is, is that if you look up the inspection records associated with those food trucks, which I have, and I have documentation on that, there's between four to six violations regarding refrigerated temperature. So if they're trying to say you can take a smaller delivery, and again, if it's food as an example, and it's stored in a food truck in a residential neighborhood, why would they even bother? You know, it just doesn't make sense, so anyways, I don't know.
Yeah, that's very much a Department of Health jurisdiction, but I want to make clear, the Department of Health can say they can take deliveries there? We say they can't.
Well, that's why I look.
So, yeah, we say they can't, so that's what we're going.
I didn't know we need to make more of an explicit of the hierarchy here, so, thank you. Thank you. And, Director, Council President, I know you have something to add.
Well, yeah, I think, I don't know if everyone's missing the point, but we have a food truck ordinance, sir.
Oh, this is different. So he's talking about not the operation, but the storage, and our ordinance does not cover the storage.
Well, I believe it does. We have an extensive, I don't know if you've read it, but Chapter 5.44, we have permitting and regulations in mobile food trucks. We have an extensive ordinance, I know because I drafted it a few years ago, and it does, it does say, "food establishment means a business operation that stores, prepares, packages, serves, vends, or otherwise provides food for human consumption that is contained in the state health code." So we have, if you may want to read it, it's pretty lengthy.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
It's extensive, it does not allow food trucks in any residential area, nor does it allow it in commercial areas unless there's a zone established, and right now I think we only have one zone approved. We haven't even approved any further zones for it, so technically they're in violation of 5.44, and they should not be there. The other problem with the size of the trucks, and this is something we have with storage of vehicles all over residential properties, we have, you know, mobile, big mobile homes, we have boats, we have all kinds of vehicles. Vehicles are one and a half ton restriction on regular trucks, but we have nothing that, we have not enforced anything against larger vehicles. I don't know if these fall into that category, but we have a larger problem.
Guys, I want to cut this off, we're having a one-sided trial now, I wanted to get some information from the public on things that have happened regarding the issue, regarding things we can talk about that are public record, but I don't want to go into other, we don't need to have a public trial. That's not the point. I want to, Mr. Schubert and his neighbors, understand that the city is doing something on this. We have the ordinance in places, they are municipal court, there are fines pending, we have things going on, so before we get around it. Beautiful. You know, last night, I don't want to have you come back in six months. Councilman Brady.
Hi, just my last thought point. Obviously, the Alpham Estates is going through a lottery now with the interrondings and Johnstone being developed. They came to us with a pretty cool idea about adopting a spot at the beginning of the neighborhood, I believe the administration has got back to us and have been receptive, whether it was a pass, adopt a spot, or name search, something of that nature. I just wanted an update on that.
You were trying to dig up the history, and I was here before, bash in round one, way back. I think we had done some work with adopt a spot, and maybe there's language somewhere on that, so we're digging that up, and then we internally talked at the last staff meeting about who we would need, and just a little internal committee, on an administrative committee, just to, you know, pot to rec, or, because if it doesn't get maintained, the city ends up having to maintain it. So just to safeguard it, insurance, things like that, but we're on it.
Do they have a plan to move forward with that spot? What should I tell them?
You know, I would have you, I would suggest that they contact the Inzarella in Constituent Affairs, and then Director Perillo will follow up and move it forward, because I think at this point, it's not going to be something that necessarily needs council approval, you know, if there's a will to do this. So I know we had guidelines before, and I'm not sure if they were a resolution or an ordinance, but we'll look at that.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins, you have something to add?
Thank you, President. Through the administration, Rob, and first of all, thank you again for your service and pleasure to work with you. In regards to an update on the Candy Cane preschool on all-year-olds, I had asked last month, I get more calls from the owners looking for signage, because they're registered as a school, they feel that they should have the same communications for speeders and patrols in that area, but they're looking for signage as well.
Okay.
So again, I did receive more calls on it.
Okay, I know we talked about traffic enforcement, I didn't talk to the police chief about that.
But they're looking for signs as well for speeders in that area. Also, just a point of council communication, I did receive two letters this week, one as an update, and I gave both of them to the clerk's office for future public works, but one of them in particular, some traffic concerns at Bain Middle School, but the one that was really pressing with me is the notice of flooding that's going on in a lot of the homes in Westwood Estates that needs to be addressed. Almost immediately, I responded to, because there are many houses over there where the cellars are flooding as a result of water drain off. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Poposis?
Just two things. One, follow up on Councilman Brady's suggestion of the adopt a spot. I think that went back probably to Mayor O'Leary or Mayor Laffey, but I know the state has some guidelines, you may want to just look at theirs and maybe near it, that you have to get a snow insurance policy and stuff, just in case somebody gets hurt. But the state has some pretty good guidelines that you might be able to follow. And the second thing is, just invite all of you and everybody watching at home in the gallery here, grabbing the Fourth Annual Knightsville Gazebo Christmas Tree lighting, that is on December 2nd at 4:00 p.m., so all are welcome, it's a good community event.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Layne?
Thank you, Council President. I'm looking at the legal expenses again, so Mr. Strong. I see under $68,000, maybe I'm wrong, can you just hand me the code? Amount?
I'm going to miss you, Councilman, you know.
I know you are.
Well, I am, seriously.
No, you don't need to hire me, I can give you this stuff.
But I'm going to tell you, right now through November 26th, it's rounded off 568,000.
So we spent 568,000 dollars in legal expenses for a case that's seven to eight years old, and we haven't got a resolution, and I understand she's filed another case, is that correct?
This is the case associated with it, yes.
All right, so we're starting lawsuit number two. So maybe before this is all over, we have to come back from starting to testify.
Probably will, so.
We could lose a million dollars in legal expenses. I find this amazing, that we can't settle an eight-year-old case, except we can afford to give attorneys over half a million dollars and every minute that amount of clients.
As I have said to you before, and I, obviously, in executive session, we say things that I can't say out here, but as I have said to you before, we pick fights carefully, you know I don't spend a lot of city money on a lot of things. Rest assured that we have had extensive numbers of depositions in the past month that have been very costly, and I am fully confident in the position we are taking, not to disclose what that is or what that is not at this point, but I am fully confident that we are doing what is in the best interest. I realize the numbers are disproportionate, but there are things that we need to do to protect the city from future situations like this, and making decisions too quickly based on one number in front of us could cause longer-term numbers down the road in future cases.
I just wonder what the dollar amount is to prove a point.
With all due respect, it's not necessarily to prove a point. I indicated to you in executive session with the county office of Ben, and they're just not acceptable.
See you next morning. I'll see Mr. Strong next time.
Councilman McCray?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to personally thank Director Muskie, and it's been a pleasure working with you. You always kept the door open for me, I appreciate it. I hope to have a great working relationship with Director Perillo, I'm sure I will. You've been a great help and a great asset to the city, so we will miss you.
Councilman Layne?
I'm thinking. How are you doing? Mrs. Lexie, for 15 years that we served together, she was there every time I was there, I know that. She did a nice little job. We went back and forth a few times, but I think overall, we have a very good relationship, and I appreciate your intelligent intellect, you're one of the most intelligent people I've ever come across.
Well, thank you, Council, and I have to say, we've had a long and entertaining, and I think really productive time together. We've banchered back and forth, and I always said that Councilman Layne is the king of one-liners, because he comes out with better ones than everybody I know, so you can talk about intellect, but that's ready to shock, because I know what comes out in a one-liner from a.
The chairman's CD was calling, you were so down to him.
For someone from Stoughton, I was going to go.
Saying, what are you doing, that's your honor. But thank you, Council, it really has been a pleasure. We've been in this a long time together.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Just. Councilwoman Bush, President?
Thank you, Council President. One last comment. When I first started, Director Muskie was there, some eight years ago, so I've had the pleasure of dealing with her for many, many years, with this slight absence there for about a year or so, but it's always been a very professional relationship, and I'm really going to miss, I'm going to miss you. You've been helpful to me for my eight years in the city, and it's a great loss for the city, but we know it's in your best interest, so good luck.
You good? The portion of the meeting is now closed. All business, there is no old business. Disruption of new business.
Proposed orders, 6th, 11-1801, amending the budget for the fiscal year from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, from the oil over-organization, sponsored by Mayor Fong, refer to the Finance Committee for hearing on December 3rd. Proposed ordinance, 11-1802, ratifying school committees collective bargaining agreement with the Cranston Teachers Alliance, local 1704, teacher assistant, technical assistant, bus aid unit, refer to Finance Committee for hearing on December 3rd. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Laney's business, there are two items, they can be read and available if you sort of request them. City Council's next regular monthly meeting will be held on Monday, December 7th, oh, I'm sorry. I tend to motion send two pieces of new business to the proper committee. So moved. Motion on the second?
Second.
I have a second on the discussion, seeing none, but please take the roll. Yes? Yes. 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 Yes, and as stated, Ms. Laney's business in the co-access, the team should live in 215 Mon CBA, and the state of R.I. disposition of surplus land. Any questions, Rose?